All right, good evening, folks. It is six o'clock by my watch, so I'm going to call the special meeting of the Champagne County Board to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Hannah R. Friedman.
Here.
Lockshin.
Here.
Pugh.
Present.
Rodriguez. Rod- Rogers. Sexton. Store. Sullard.
Here.
Thor'sland.
Here.
Vanish Theorot.
Here.
Wiggs.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Cagle.
Here.
Carter. Covert. Crane.
Here.
Esri. Farni.
Here.
Fava. Portado. Greer.
Here.
Locke.
Here.
We have a quorum. Would the clerk please read the notice of the meeting?
Notice is hereby given that a special meeting of the County Board Champagne County, Illinois will convene on May thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, six p.m. in the Shields-Carter Meeting Room, Brookers Administrative Center, seventeen seventy-six East Washington Street in Urbana, Illinois. In said county for the purpose of approving the budget amendment for the carrel property tax settlement agreement and a rental housing developer agreement and any other business pending before the board, which said meeting shall continue in session from day to day until the completion of said business.
Can I have a motion to approve the agenda, please? J.J., second by Beth. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. Is there any public input? All right, seeing none. Communications from the board. And seeing none. New business, adoption of resolution number two thousand and twenty-five dash one four six, budget amendment BUA two thousand and twenty-five five nineteen, funds ten eighty, General Corporate Department, seventy-five, General County, increased appropriations three hundred and eighty-eight thousand, sixty-two dollars and sixty-eight cents, increased revenue zero. Reason appropriation of funds to pay for the carrel settlement approved by resolution number two thousand and twenty-five dash ninety. Can I have a motion? Got a motion from J.J., second from Matt. Discussion. Mr. Farni.
Yeah, could we table this until another member of the board arrives? We don't have fifteen members.
Correct, thank you.
So could we act on the RPC matter first?
I'm fine going in that direction, thank you. I did not do my head count on fifteen.
I'll second that if it's a motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second to move on to item B. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. All right. Item B, adoption of ordinance number two thousand and twenty-five dash eight, authorizing the execution of a rental housing developer agreement and a regulatory and land use restriction agreement for the Parker-Glynn two affordable housing development. Can I have a motion? Motion by Jenny, second by Eric. Discussion. Mr. Wilson.
Hello, Lita, how are you? Thank you for being here.
A couple of questions. Thank you. Hey. All right, what's your marathon time now? I'm sure you are. A couple of questions. One is, I just want to confirm that there, my understanding that there is no impact on the county with respect to its general fund.
That is correct.
Thank you. And then I'm not opposed to this, I just want some questions answered. Clarification helps for me. So the seven hundred and fifty thousand funding gap that the RPC has, is it a combined gap with RPC and City Champagne or just RPC?
The seven hundred thousand would be coming from RPC and fifty, I believe, would be from the city of Champagne.
Oh, okay, cool. So seven hundred from RPC and fifty from Champagne. Okay. And the way I understand this resolution from the county's perspective is we're just relinquishing our rights to the property? Or how is that? Can you explain that?
So just a quick background, and Lisa and I will tag team on this. So these funds, while they are ARPA funds, these are not the same ARPA funds that the county, the forty million that the county received. These ARPA funds were specially designated by the feds to be used for the emergency rental assistance program. The county received those funds directly from Treasury. We were, I think it was based on population. The rest of the state, I believe those funds were administered through the Illinois Housing Development Authority. But for Champagne County, we received those funds directly and the RPC provided rental assistance to residents in Champagne County. Now, according to the rules of this particular program, if seventy-five percent of the funds had been spent, the rest of it could be used for affordable housing. And so we've done an affordable housing project with the Champagne County Housing Authority here in Urbana. These funds were going to be assisting this project, which is in the city of Champagne. And essentially, the seven hundred thousand dollars that you're approving through this agreement will help to close the gap in the funding that the developer has. So, you know, when we started talking to them, which was probably last year in June, as everything else, costs have gone up. And so that's why there's this gap. And we're fortunate that we have these resources that can be provided to them to close that gap so they can complete their project.
You want to ask me another question?
I do, is that okay?
I think he, I think he helped, he addressed it, so.
All right, thanks. So I think that, so in other words, there's a gap to close the work, and this is phase two. There's a phase one, now this is phase two, right?
Phase one was completed.
All right, now there's a phase two part.
So phase one was completed, very impactful locally. We work with a lot of low-income households, and finding housing that's affordable has been very difficult. So when phase one was launched here in Champagne, I heard directly from our staff about how impactful that was. So we, you'll reference in, on, in the, there's a, you asked about the fifty thousand, it's referenced exactly the city of Champagne home loan through the home consortium. And so through the home consortium, we oftentimes will be aware of different affordable housing that's in process locally. And so Woda Cooper was a company that came and actually talked with home consortium. We asked them to talk with us about the recent development of the Parker-Glynn one. And during that, it came up that they had a phase two project, but they had a funding gap. And so it was through that consultation and our knowledge of the impact here in Champagne County, particularly in Champagne, that we began to talk about trying to meet that funding gap. And so there is a phase two that we believe will go forward, and they actually have a phase three that they hope to do in the future also.
Okay, so one other follow-up question. So the, the seven hundred and fifty thousand, the way I'm reading the package is really a loan. You're the lender. This company out of Ohio is the borrower. And how does that work with ARPA money tied up in a loan that has a forty-year term? And then all that interest that comes from that forty-year term ends up where?
So one of the things we did is we engaged outside counsel that is experienced in these types of projects. And this particular firm I've worked with for over twenty years prior to coming to Champagne County. So our understanding from them, as they read the rules and regulations regarding ARPA funding, is that once those funds are paid back, and I don't think it'll be the entire seven hundred thousand dollars, I think it's going to be a portion of the, what's the term? Cash flow that will be paid back to us. Those funds would have to be, must be used for the same purpose, which would be housing-related. We can't use it for any other purpose than what ARPA funds were, the intention with the ARPA funding. So while it will be paid over time, when RPC receives those funds, it will have to be used specifically for the intended purpose of ARPA funding.
And then two more questions and I'm done. So number one, it said in the document that the schedule or, and what the work's going to be accomplished would be in exhibit C, but there's nothing there.
I believe that that's, you know.
It's been forwarded, at the time of the packet, we're working with multiple, as you see, the different funding sources, so there's mul-, there's multiple loans. And so those exhibits have been finalized, they've been forwarded, so we can provide those. They, they provide the plan, the land, all of the workups, the exhibits, and there, I believe, maybe today they've been finalized and sent to be included in the final closing.
And then the last question is for Steve, just to make sure. My only hesitation on this is are we sure that once we agree to this as a county board, then there's no strings attached to us with respect to the loan, the loan payment, the forty years of payment alone, it doesn't come back to haunt us some way?
Well, this is run through RPC, so RPC is a county entity. I don't know that I can, can answer in terms of the long-term potential impact, but I don't think it's anything different than what we engage with, with RPC for other activities and projects that they engage in. I mean, RPC is not a separate organization, it is Champagne County, so that's the best answer I can give for your question. Stephanie? Jeff, does that answer your question as fully as I can answer it?
Yes, it does, thank you.
Okay. Stephanie?
Lita, the question that I had is, Woda Cooper Company is the developer, or then are they also the operator?
Your, your mic turned off.
So typically with these types of projects, sometimes there are separate LLCs that are set up to limit liability to the bank corporation. I I can provide the ancillary, I have to look at the paperwork again, but I think, well, you're asking if they're the developer, as well as will they be the entity that will manage? Sometimes these types of deals, you bring someone else to manage the property once it's developed. I'm not quite sure if they have shared with us who's going to manage it once it's developed.
Sorry, I guess while I was, why I was asking that is to sort of piggyback on what Mr. Wilson was saying, is that, you know, every day I look at the news and they're gutting HUD, right? They're gutting, like they basically, the current proposal, and I don't see much of a resistance about this, is effectively ending section eight. And so anytime that I see something that is reliant upon like low-income mixing, you know what I'm saying, is that are we, I'm not, I'm not worried about like the county board incurring liability, but I am worried about, like, have you all done like a risk assessment on this rapidly shifting climate in terms of the federal apparatuses that support affordable housing in order to ensure that this group that we're giving this investment to, that's supposed to pay us back, is going to be able to have a viable business model to do so? Because just to be honest with you, I'm, I'm increasingly skeptical of how affordable housing, you know, I don't know, like what, what are the, the sort of income sources that is going to be supporting the people that are living in these housing, when it seems that some, several of these, like the legs that support that stool are just being kicked out right now. At least that's what's being proposed on a federal level. the, like the legs that support that stool are just being kicked out right now? At least that's what's being proposed on a federal level.
I'll, I'll, I'll provide just a brief response, and then I think Delitza will, will provide a follow-up to that. That will be pertinent. The, the funds that we have currently to invest and that Ida and all the funders, those are funds that are currently accessible, allocated, ready to go. Agreeably going few, going forward in HUD. So the income limits for these units are based on HUD standards, and they're limited based on the household incomes to be seen what those become in the future. I, I think the other piece that I'll, I'll lean in on, Delitza, much of this is based on tax credits. And so that's where a lot of the discounts and income, and I think that's what will be supporting it going forward. I think I'll also lean back to Delitza with regard to the repayment of loans in these types of affordable housing development. They oftentimes don't result in paybacks because of cash flow, and if they do, they're very long out.
I may begin by saying that if we were not investing these funds in this project, we probably would be paying these funds back to the feds. And I think that's like September of this year. So, and then Lisa is correct. Most of the funds that are already part of this project, I think they're pretty much in place. And, but, you know, to your point, I don't know what's going to happen tomorrow with the shifting environment, but at this point, from what we know, things are in place. Yep.
Anyone else? Jeff?
That was an awesome question. And the way I read this, I think the borrowers, both the builder and the operator, and the way I read the language, because the, they're determining ER two qualifications and then maintaining the facilities to HUD standard. That's just how I read it.
I think the other thing, just to add related to the property management, with phase one, they have a property management already in place, and that will serve phase two also.
Further questions from the board? Go ahead, Brett.
Not so much a question, but actually, phase one is in my district up there on North Neal Street. I actually did stop by about a week ago and talk to the people there, and all he said is, thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. It made a world of difference in their lives.
All right, are there further questions from the board? Seeing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Delitza. All right. Thank you so much, J.J., for your head count. I appreciate that. It would have been a little awkward. All right, back to item A, adoption of resolution twenty twenty-five dash one four six, budget amendment B U A twenty twenty-five, five nineteen, fund ten eighty, General Corporate Department, seventy-five, General County, increased appropriation three hundred and eighty-eight thousand, sixty-two dollars and sixty-eight cents, increased revenue zero. Reason appropriation of funds to pay for the Carl settlement approved by resolution twenty twenty-five dash nine zero. Can I have a motion? Oh, that's right, we already have a motion and a second. Excuse me. All right, we have the motion and the second. Discussion.
Just quick comment, Steve, don't we need to, the two members that attend late, do we need to acknowledge that they're here as far as their record?
Usually the clerk will notice that in the minutes. All right. Not seeing any further questions. All in favor, please signify. But, okay, this is a roll call, fifteen, yes. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Hannah Wehr Friedman.
Yes.
Lockshin.
Yes.
Pew.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Sullard.
Yes.
Thorson.
Yes.
Vanish Theorot.
Yes.
Wiggs.
Yes.
Wilson.
Yes.
Cagle.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
Crane.
Yes.
Farney.
Yes.
Portato. Greer.
Yes.
Locke.
Yes.
As we have no further business, this meeting is adjourned. We will re-adjourn for committee of the whole in approximately ten minutes. Thank you very much.